Good morning. We will call the April 4th, 2023 City Council Meeting to Order. I ask Councilman Johnny Dodd to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Good morning. Everybody stand, please. I got Mr. Jacoby Shaw will be doing the prayer this morning. He's a student at Pravie Prep, go to Destiny Church. So, Mr. Jacoby, can you please come up?
Yes. Father, we thank you for the time that you have prepared for us to come together once again. Father, I believe that you will do a great thing here this time. Father, I believe that all things are working in their favor. So, Father, I believe and I thank you for the goodness and mercy that it draws for their
Yes.
Lord, I thank you for being with us today. Father, I thank you for bearing something great for the places and the people that have faced a tragedy and the tornadoes.
Mm-hmm.
Father, I pray now for the councilments of the city now. Father, I ask that you store unto them all the goodness that is in place for them. Father, I believe that all things are good in your eyes. And, God, I thank you on today. I thank you for your grace. I thank you for your mercy. I thank you for this day that you have made that we shall be glad to rejoice in him. In Jesus' name that I pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three is roll call. And Marquesha, I think you see all council members are present. Item four, approval of minutes from the March 7th, 2023 Council Meeting. Those meetings were, those minutes were emailed out to you, so there are no additions or corrections to the minutes. They will stand approved as read. Item four is proclamations and recognitions, and we have a few today. All right. Our first proclamation, it's going to go on here. Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Any representatives?
Come on up. Yes.
And the proclamation, proclamation reads, whereas we need to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious growing problem that changes lives path for nearly 4 million of our nation's children annually. Whereas this problem, which has reached epidemic proportions in all regions of our nation, respects to no, respects no racial, religious, socioeconomic, or geographic boundaries, and can prevent children from following the road to a successful future. Whereas we need to take steps to educate the public on child abuse and its causes. Whereas the Carl Perkins Center for Prevention of Child Abuse, through its parent training, educational programs, and community service activities, supports the community in preventing and dealing with child abuse to improve the quality of life for our children and families. Now therefore, I, Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse, Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month.
On behalf of our whole organization, we want to thank you. This is a big month for us to, to share what we do and these great kids that we get to serve. And thank you so much.
All right. Next up, we have Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I know y'all are here. The proclamation reads, whereas every day, 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators from the City of Jackson Police Department, the City of Jackson Fire Department, Madison County Sheriff's Office, Madison County Fire Department, Jackson Med Link, and Tennessee Highway Patrol answer requests for emergency aid from the public with professionalism and compassion. And whereas the efforts of these unseen first responders to answer calls for help, gather information, and assure the appropriate assistance is provided have saved innumerable lives. Whereas the work of these 911 Public, Public Safety Telecommunicators is invaluable and deserves public recognition and appreciation. Whereas the United States Congress designated the second full week in April as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week to recognize the high-quality communication services provided by our 911 Public Service Telecommunicators. And whereas Jackson and Madison County hereby honor and commend the 911 Public Safety Telecommunicators for their professionalism, commitment, compassion, and steadfast pursuit of their goals to protect life and property. Now therefore, we, Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and A.J. Massey, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of April 10th through the 16th as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
The mayor's reading this. It'll only be a moment. I don't have a video for you this year. I'd like for you to see the video again. So, it's on YouTube. It's a song. It says, "Who am I?" And that explains who these individuals are behind me. They're also in that video. So, I won't play it for you again this year. But I would like to let you know that standing behind me, including myself, is 123 years of service. So... 123 years of service. That doesn't include who works with us. You know, we've got EMS Dispatch here, THP, Jackson Central Dispatch Police and Fire, and Madison County Sheriff Department. Representative from Madison County Fire didn't make it this morning, but they were invited. So, just so you know that when you, when you dial that seven-digit number or you dial that 911, these are the individuals that are on the other end of that line, that stay on the line with you. They are also the ones that dispatch that ambulance, dispatch that fire truck, dispatch that police car, or that sheriff department car, that Madison County Fire Truck to your location, city fire as well. They stay on the line with you. Some of them even give you pre-instruction arrival directions before they get there. So, these are the voices that you hear, but you never actually see their faces. And they work 24/7, 365, and 66 days a year. So, through the tornadoes, we travel in. Through the ice, we slide in. So, it's an honor to work with these individuals and to know them throughout our Jackson, actually our whole entire nation, because we are one. We are all one. Thank you.
All right. Our last proclamation for the day is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. All right. This proclamation reads, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of the City of Jackson. Whereas the City of Jackson, Tennessee shares a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and desire to support their needs for justice and healing. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our communities as seen by statistics indicating that 1 in 4 women and 1 in 6 men experience sexual assault in their lifetime. Whereas in 2021, more than 1,800 reports of forcible rape and sexual assault were made to law enforcement in West Tennessee, according to the TBI. 247 of those West Tennessee victims of sexual assault were served by RAP, and Jackson Madison County General Hospital served 96 victims for sexual assault and for forensic exams. Whereas our communities recognize the remarkable strength, courage, and resilience survivors possess, and that with the appropriate support, resources, and information, survivors of sexual violence can follow their own path towards healing and restoration. Whereas RAP requests that your support for the public awareness campaign to illuminate West Tennessee. The campaign is designed to shine a light on the prevalence of sexual violence in the West Tennessee area, and to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals, so that they can help victims to access supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. Whereas the City of Jackson acknowledges survivors of sexual violence belong to diverse backgrounds, identities, cultures, and communities. We join RAP in celebrating these unique characteristics of survivors, which help aid them in their healing and discovery of their own resilience. Whereas the City of Jackson strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is and how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence based on an attitude, in an attitude of belief. Now therefore, I, Scott Conger, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to join RAP and all supportive service programs in the belief that community members must be a part of the solution in sexual violence.
On behalf of RAP and all of the individuals that we support, we just want to thank the community for the support that you give to us. Our specialists work really, really hard for the individuals that they support. And when we have a community that backs us, it makes a world of difference. So, we just want to thank you.
All right. Last on proclamations and recognitions is a, an update from the Jackson Arts Council.
Thank you so much and good morning.
Good morning.
To Mayor Conger, the best mayor in Tennessee, and arguably in the United States. This is not endorsement. It's just my, my opinion, just back. And to the City Council, the Jackson City Council, the members who, who fully support the Jackson Arts Council for, for their efforts and their work. I am Darlette Carver-Samuels, and I have the pleasure of serving as president of the Board of Directors for the Jackson Arts Council. And we have other members of the board who are here to say thank you. Stan, Judy, Jennifer, Bill, Tawonika, Michelle, and my other bill. Will you all please stand? These are all members of the Board of Directors for the Jackson Arts Council. And then also, we have the local arts organizations and local artists. Sherry with the Jackson Symphony Choral Society, I hope you all are standing. Jackson Theater Guild, Ballet Arts, and the NED. Will you all please help me celebrate the local arts organizations? The purpose of our being here today is to say thank you. Thank you to each of you for your unwavering support of the arts. In addition, we're here to share with you how your support of the arts has significantly impacted our community. The growth of the arts and culture sector is not by accident. We have been very intentional. You have seen a direct investment from the public to grow the arts and culture sector here in Jackson, and it's working. All local arts organizations and artists are working tirelessly to share their work here for the citizens and for you, to make Jackson a more beautiful and livable place. The Arts Council has added programming, including the First Friday Walks, April 14th, to join the city's efforts to develop an art district open to all artists to sell and sustain their work. That's the First Friday Art Walks. Not only do these artists and arts organizations beautify the, our community, but they also drive tourism and attract and retain residents. They drive significant economic activity. The Arts Council gathers data with the Americans for the Arts about the economic impact of Jackson, Tennessee's arts and culture sector. Right now, we know that Jackson spends at least $4.7 million annually on attending arts and cultural events in the city. And that's just the City of Jackson alone. We expect that number to increase at the end of the new economic impact study that will conclude this May. So, with the fast growth of our business in, in our region, it is critical that Jackson continues to put its best foot forward. What you see in the arts and the people you see here today, they are your best. They are the builders of culture, community, and identity for all of us. They are the economic and tourism drivers. They are the creative minds to solve even our most challenging problems. And they deserve our collective support for all that they do for all of us. So, we're here to say thank you for your past support, and we ask each of you for your continued and ungraving support of the arts and culture for the success, growth, and betterment of our community. John is here to give us specifics on the impact of the arts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is John Huey. I'm the vice president of board operations for the Jackson Arts Council. We provided each of you with our impact report for the previous year. For fiscal year 2023, the Jackson Arts Council has sourced from public and private funding a total of $197,980 for the local arts and cultural center. This is an all-time high for the Arts Council, but we are not close to being finished. With the significant increase in funding from federal and state opportunities, 26 arts and cultural grants were awarded to the following: Arts in McNary, Ballet Arts, the NED McWhorter Cultural Arts Center, the City of Parsons, Jackson Symphony, Jackson Theater Guild, Jackson Madison County Library, our Jackson Home at the Co., Jackson International Food and Arts Festival, Renaissance on Main, Friends of the Library, Brownsville Arts Council, the River Time Players, City of Whiteville, Jackson Madison County School System Band Programs, Lane College, Jackson Choral Society, and local artists such as Hugh Pugh, Lee Benson, and Samantha Wood. The contribution to the Jackson Arts Council from the City of Jackson in the fiscal year 2023 has provided direct financial support for the Jackson Theater Guild's productions of Oscar and Felix and A Christmas Carol. It also provided funding for Lane College's Sphero Paint Project, Jackson Madison County School System's band programs, the Jackson Symphony, Starlight Symphony, and Ballet Arts Nutcracker. The Jackson Arts Council has distributed five times the amount of funding that we typically distribute in a year. With that increase of funding this year from the federal government, arts organizations who are represented here have been able to impact their lives and share their art with at least 176,766 people in six counties of Tennessee. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you all. Any questions from council? Comments?
We appreciate the work that y'all do every day, every month. We, it's great to see the arts grow, to be a witness of it downtown, and to watch the, the arts district start to come into formation. So, appreciative of the work that y'all do and hope that we can continue to support you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and support.
All right. We'll move on to first reading and item one. If you'll counsel remember item one, we will defer the public hearing until second reading, a request of counsel. But item one is changes to Title IV, Chapter 1, City Pension System.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I'm here again on behalf of the Code Committee to suggest more changes to the Code. The first one being in Title IV, Chapter 1. If you'll remember, the council sitting as the pension board recently asked our committee to amend this section to make it more clear. Here was the problem with Title IV, Chapter 1. It talks about a city pension system. And anyone reading that particular section of the code would likely be confused to think that that's the pension system of the city employees that we have now, which is not the case. And, and one thing I want to make really clear is that the only people impacted by Title IV, Chapter 1 are 17 retirees or beneficiaries of those retirees who were left from the old system. Now, the key date was May 1st, 1974. On that date, the city voted to swap over and have their employees all go over to the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. We call it TCRS. And since then, all new employees have been on that system. All employees now are on that system. But on that date, if you were already employed and on the old city pension system, you could elect to stay on it. And again, this 21-page section of Title IV has to do with those 17 employees. So, the Code Committee has gone through there, and we have suggested some changes to the council, which effectively takes out anything applicable to current employees, because we have no current employees on the system and have not had any for a very long time. So, we are not changing the system. Nothing impacts any of the 17 people who are still on or receiving benefits from that old system. And certainly, nothing impacts any of the current city employees. It's just cleaning up some of the language, so that any citizen who reads this section of the Code will look at it and say, "Oh, I understand. This is something that happened before 1974." We still, the city still has an obligation to serve these 17 people, so if we need to keep portions of it still in the Code. But at least it makes it clear if you read it what it's all about.
Thank you, Ms. Nunn. Any questions from council? Like I said, we'll have the public hearing at the second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Item two is changes to Title 10, Chapter 1, Animal Control in General.
Council, this, these suggested changes from the Code Committee in Chapter 1 of our animal section of our Code basically are simple ones. We had a definition in the Code from a previous change that had a definition of spay and neuter, because we had some spay and neuter provisions in there previously. Those have been taken out by previous council votes several years ago, so there's no reason to have a spay and neuter definition in there. In its place, the council, and we, again, we were working very closely with the Animal Control Center on this, they suggested a definition of proper food and shelter. They needed that particular definition in the Code. And that has to do with, you know, how an animal is to be fed on species-appropriate food, how they're to be housed, what kind of covering and shelter they must have. It, it gives the animal control people some definitive language that they can work with when they're enforcing these sections of the Code. And then, again, in Chapter 1 and Chapter 2, we have several references to that Animal Control Director being a HEM, and so we're trying to make that gender, gender neutral, particularly since our Animal Control Director is Whitney Owen, who is a woman. So, that's the changes to Chapter 1.
Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading. So, we'll have the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, can be recognized at this time. Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Item three is changes to Title 10, Chapter 2, Animal Control, Livestock and Other Farm Animals Within 250 Linear Feet of Property Line.
Council, this section of the Code, we found several pretty serious ambiguities in it, that the Animal Control Director would have a difficult time knowing how to enforce. For example, one of the things said that you could not have certain animals, particularly chickens, without having the approval of the animal or the health officer, which is the Animal Control Director. Approval wasn't, you know, it was not very clear what approval meant. And so, the Code Committee is suggesting that that be changed to permit, okay, so that the Animal Control Director can permit the animal, these same animals. There's not really a change in the Code. We're just suggesting that what's in the Code be more clear with the permit system. And attached to that, you'll see in 211, we're proposing an added section to the Code. 211 are the regulations if citizens want to have chickens. There were, there were not any kind of approval guidelines for the health officer to go out if someone wanted to get a permit for a chicken, to know, "What do I have to do if I, if I do want them?" And so, 211, again, was presented to us by the Animal Control Center, and these were their suggestions that would be, make it a safe and clean environment if certain citizens wanted to have chickens. Now, the Code Committee did suggest a 100-feet area that you had to have between you and your neighbor. I want to point out one other ambiguity that was in the Code. The, it's, the Code previously said you couldn't have any chickens or other animals if they were within 250 feet of your neighbor, of a residence, a business, another entity next to you. What we didn't know, does that mean 250 feet between your chicken coop and your neighbor's house? Or is it between your chicken coop or your neighbor's, or their property line? So, the Code Committee is suggesting that we change that to read to the, to the property line. The Code Committee suggested 100 feet. This council's previously voted to, that you want to keep it the same at 250 feet. So, essentially, all these changes in Chapter 2 are not really changing anything. They're just making clear what the rules are and clearing up any ambiguities.
All right. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I do. Because is there a big demand from citizens to, to be allowed to have chickens in the backyard? Is that a big demand or something?
You know, I don't know that I'm the right person to ask about that, but I, I have heard a lot of yeses and nos both ways. And I think that our Code Committee did a little bit of studying on it, and they were pretty much split on whether the city should have chickens allowable in the city limits. So, ultimately, we felt like it wasn't our place to make policy. We just wanted to clean up the Code as it is. So, that was our suggestion, is to leave the Code as it, the rule is still the same, just no more ambiguities in it.
And regarding the, the way the Code reads now, those who would want to have chickens, they could have them, but they can't breed them. Is that correct?
They can't breed them. They can't have roosters. There's got to be certain food, certain cleanup, certain types of coops. And I think the key thing is the distance. You have to have a certain distance, and they have to be in the backyard. And there has to be a certain distance between your chicken coop and the property line to your neighbor. So, it's a pretty good distance at 250 feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Ms. Linn, I just want to make sure. So, the 250 feet, they cannot be granted a permit unless they meet the 250-feet requirement from property line to property line.
They can't get a permit. That's correct. Unless they have the, their chicken coop is 250 feet from their property line, and they meet all of those additional requirements that are in the new section 211.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Does this mean that there won't be grandfathering in since there's no changes?
There's no changes, so there's no reason to have any kind of grandfathering in as far as this Code change is concerned.
This is an item on first reading. So, we'll have the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, can be recognized at this time.
Moved to approve.
Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. And then we got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Do we have any chicken coops at this point in the city anywhere that we need to address?
Councilman, I'm sure we do. I, I don't know of any personally, but I'm sure we do.
But may we could, could we get them checked out and make sure they are following the rules or give them an updated information?
Yeah. I mean, we can't, we can't go and check everyone's backyard. It's really more of a complaint.
But by complaint, yes, sir.
So, yeah, we're not going to send our animal control officers out and knock on doors and check yards. But yeah, we'll, we'll check those out on if there's a complaint from a neighbor about those.
Certainly, Councilman, if I may throw this in, if someone, if a citizen does have a chicken coop, they'll need to contact the Animal Control Center and apply for a permit for those chickens that they have in the city limits.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional comments, questions? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Item four is changes to Title 15, Motor Vehicles, Traffic, and Parking, Chapters 1 through 13.
Council, there are several changes in Title 15, which is a very long section of our Code. We've worked really closely with the police department to help us to know what's important, what's not important any longer. And we've searched state law. We've talked to the school system, the local school system, about school zones. And so, I want to come to you with these suggestive changes, if I may go through these. There are a couple of changes because there are no more children. There are a couple of changes because there are no more children doing school patrols. We had several sections in our code that had to do with the rules of children. I know when I was a little girl, there were, the kids stood out with the little stop signs and, you know, directed the traffic. And that's, I guess we were a smaller city then. So the school system has informed us, we no longer have that. So we are suggesting to take any reference to the schoolchildren doing school patrol out of the, out of the code. Also, the distance of the school zone, we're trying to come in compliance with the state law. And the state law says it's got to be within 200 feet in advance of school grounds. Now, I believe that we are in compliance, technically, practically speaking, but our code wasn't up to date. So we're just updating our code to what is, you know, in reality, actually happening and what's in state code. The other thing is that in a place where a school zone is in a 30 mile-per-hour or greater area, we, the council, the Code Committee is recommending to the council that we extend that one to 250 feet. State law says that, that you, the council, may make a determination of how long that school zone needs to be when you've got a higher speed limit. So we're recommending 250 feet. Section 15-108 talks about a city traffic engineer. Well, we don't currently have a city traffic engineer, but that section of the code also says that if we don't have one, that the chief of police can serve in that capacity. And Tom Corley, our chief, has told the committee that it's very important that he gets to serve in that role. The one change that we're suggesting is that he not be called the city traffic engineer at his suggestion. He would like to be called the city traffic official, because he, as he tells us, he's not an engineer. So, and, and if you make this change to the code, what we'll have is that, you know, one day we may want a city traffic engineer. And if we do, he'll be called that. But in the meantime, when the chief of police serves, he'll be called the city traffic official. The next thing has to do with the traffic citation books that the police officers carry. Those are being provided by the police department, but our code says they're provided by the city recorder. That's just a cleanup. Another thing, state law requires that the code, that the citation books be kept for a period of three years. We had five years in our code, so we're suggesting that change. Another thing, this is, this is a pretty big thing. As you know, if you've ever parked downtown, we used to chalk tires, you know? That was how the meter maids would determine whether you'd been parked, you know, over the limit of time that you could park. The Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is a federal judge, has ruled that chalking tires is unconstitutional. So we're suggesting that that entire section of the code be eliminated. And here's a funny one. We have in our code that every bicycle in town must have a bell or a horn. I'm not sure how long that's been in there, but, but we're suggesting that that be taken out. About the registration fees, we're making two suggestions about that. First, that eventually, that we don't place the amount of the registration fee in the code, but that after July 1st of 2024, that any person can go to the city recorder's office and find out how much that registration fee is. That way, we don't have to amend the code every single time that, that council wants to change it. The last change is in section or Chapter 13, which has to do with traffic control photographic system. It is something that the police department is telling us we do not use any longer and will not use in the foreseeable future. And they're suggesting that we remove all of Chapter 13 from the code.
All right. Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading. So I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion, motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Thank you. Item five, proposed budget amendment for JTA operating expense subsidy in the amount of $530,943.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This particular proposed budget amendment would increase the current subsidy for operations and capital that the city provides to the Jackson Transit Authority. It would increase it by a total of $530,943. The amendment's actually kind of composed of three different components, if you will. The first and the largest is $394,843. That results from a mistake in the original budget for JTA this year that included the city's appropriation estimate as match on a grant. So that's the biggest component of this. But in addition to that component, there's $116,100 requested for a city match for a new grant, and that's for operations. And an additional $20,000 is match for a grant for preventative maintenance. So the total is $530,943, and this would be funded from the general fund, fund balance.
All right. Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading. So I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
I so moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item six, budget amendment for JPD Violent Crimes Intervention Grant in the amount of $783,302.
The state of Tennessee has awarded the city of Jackson $783,302. This is a NoMax grant. The way I understand it, this has a technology focus for the recipients of this grant. I think everyone's aware, the police department currently has invested in quite a bit of different types of technology. And these funds would be used to both expand, update the current technology, and I understand also bring in some new technology that would be new to the police department. This is a NoMax grant.
Any questions from council?
All of this money would be used for technology, no salaries or, or employment of people or anything like that?
Well, my understanding, and I, I think Captain Doe is here somewhere, but my, my understanding, I believe I recall hearing, that there was, there's some technology that we have now here in Jackson that some of our neighboring cities and counties in West Tennessee elect to use this technology. And I believe there is one position, is that right, that would be?
Yes, we're going to have a salary position for our NIVN personnel.
Right. What?
A NIVN personnel to assist in our NIVN lab. It's where whenever we collect show casings from scenes, we can have those testing, those casings tested. So we'll have a person to do it. And doing that, we'll also be providing training for some of our evidence personnel along with equipment.
And the salary of that person is how much?
That salary will cover, excuse me, $170,000. And that's over the course of the three years of the grant.
Okay. Clear me up on that again. $170,000 salary for one person?
For three years.
Yeah. It's covering, yes, it's covering the years of the grant. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council?
Moved to approve.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. This is an item on first reading. So I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you. Item seven, proposed budget amendment, solid waste recycle partnership grant in the amount of $50,640.
Yes, it's a grant that we've received. NoMax required on this particular grant as well. I'm not sure if there's a problem with it. Here she is.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. So this is a grant from the Recycle Partnership. The Recycle Partnership is made up of manufacturers, industries, and associations who help create access to recycling in municipalities and other communities. So they reached out to us about this grant. It is going to be a $125,000 in kind for services. And it will be $50,640 in cash. That will go for implementing recycling education and outreach campaign, which will be something we're going to send out direct mailers for, for education on the new center that we have. The other portion of that is $28,500, and that's going towards developing our recycling site to include a compost, or, I'm sorry, to include a compactor and receiver box so that we can compact our plastic, which results in less trips to the recycle hub in Chester County. So that'll help us save money there.
All right. Any questions from council? This is an item on first reading. So I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Item eight, proposed budget amendment, JPD recoverable damages in the amount of $37,924.
Yeah, your approval would authorize a repair of the damage. I'm assuming it's a vehicle, so.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dodd.
Second.
Second. This is an item on first reading. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to can be recognized. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Move on to second reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment for Civic Center in the amount of $300,000.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment, Parks and Recreation Grant, Parks and Recreation for the amount of $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three, proposed budget amendment, Jackson Fire Department, the amount of $450,077.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four, proposed budget amendment for JPD, the amount of $47,776.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five, proposed changes to Title 14, Chapter 5, Erosion and Storm Control.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do. I, I forgot what, what that is. Can somebody tell me, like, in 60 seconds? Just 60 seconds. I don't need a lot.
On a timer. Councilman, basically, what the Code Committee suggested was that we bring these sections of the code in line with state law and in line with what was actually happening. The only major change in there was that we have a $50 per day fine in our city code, and the state law allows this council to amend your code to add in up to $5,000 fine. Okay? Now, again, we won't be able to prosecute a $50, above a $50 fine in city court, but we will be able to do that in Chancery Court.
I got you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any more discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item six, proposed changes to Title 14, Chapter 6, Discharge to Storm Sewer System.
So moved.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed, motion passed nine to zero.
Item seven, proposed changes to Title 14, Chapter 7, Environmental Advisory Appeals Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Item one under New Businesses, council will be sitting as the pension board. And consideration by the council as the pension board, a recommendation by the Code Committee to send a letter to the 17 retirees beneficiaries still receiving benefits under the old city pension system and notify them of the code changes. Hence the public hearing at the second reading, by request of council.
Counsel, we, we've suggested a letter and presented that to you by letter, in a letter to the pension board as to how that notice should read. We haven't changed any part of the city pension system, but just out of an abundance of caution, we felt like we should, that the pension board should send the, the 17 folks a letter and tell them that parts of the code have been changed that affected current employees. Again, the big thing is that there's a 2.5% increase that the pension board voted for, for these folks. So that's the first suggestion.
All right. So there's a motion on action to send the letter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Item two is still sitting as pension board by the council. Recommendation from the Code Committee to vote to provide yearly increases beginning July 1st, 2024, to the remaining retirees beneficiaries of the old city pension system that will match any increases of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, which is the current retirement system for the city, is providing to its retirees.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, proposed budget amendment for American Rescue Plan for TR White in the amount of $70,000.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment for American Rescue Plan for Wallace Road Park in the amount of $28,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item five is proposed budget amendment in capital outlay fund for Westwood Center for an amount of $11,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Good job, Bobby. Item six, consideration of a resolution to amend and re-adopt the City of Jackson Occupational Health and Safety Program.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, Stacy. Item seven is consideration of an inter-local agreement with the West Tennessee Recycling Hub.
So moved.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pa, motion passed eight to one abstain.
Item eight is consideration of a contract with LRK for Jackson Plaza Redevelopment Vision Master Planning and Design Services.
All right. Good morning, Mayor Council. Zach is not able to be here today, so I'm going to try to cover these three contracts on eight, nine, and 10. But this first contract, what went before you last month, was with LRK for the feasibility study for Jackson Plaza, as well as the sub-area plan for Old Hickory. We have a representative from LRK here if you have specific questions.
Any questions from council for Lauren or LRK?
The, the current contract reflects what we've already budgeted amendments.
Yes.
Okay. And just, and I think we've said this a couple of times, subsequent tasks, we budgeted for Task 1, subsequent tasks will be budgeted and approved by the council as we move forward.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is there. Second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
So, when we talked in Thursday night, there was mention that they did need, like, a planning specialist that could be there on the ground to make sure all the people were there. Do you want?
Victor, do you mind speaking to that?
Sure thing. Hi, Victor Buckholz with LRK Architects. We had a budgeted for a local consultant to be with us here, Tina Mercer, to help us coordinate, is basically project manager, kind of on the ground. And so, that was a line item budget that we asked for as, as an amendment, I think, to our original proposal.
Do you feel like you can still operate just as efficiently, effectively, without that?
I, I, I don't think it would be the same, you know, of course, that's why we're wanting, we're wanting that. I think it would, if we, if we can rely on additional, you know, essentially help with steering committee, essentially that person is kind of courting in the steering committee and that sort of thing. So, it puts a little more pressure on the steering committee that's local here.
So, who would be helping you then with it? Is that something, the planning department? Lauren Kirkwood? Who would be? I want to just make sure that we're doing everything.
Yeah.
Most efficiently.
Well, like I say, it, it would help to have that, have that on the, on the ground project manager here in, in town. We're in Memphis, so we're just a little bit detached, even though we're from, a lot of us are from Jackson here as well. But that steering committee, really, that's our first job, is, as when we start the, the process, is to form this steering committee in conjunction with the planning department. So, I think it's a matter of us rolling up sleeves together to do that.
Quick question, but that's something you would normally do anywhere else, wouldn't it? Have a person that would work for you?
That's right. That's right.
Having the project manager that we were talking about, is that position critical to the success of this, what you're doing?
I think it is. I think it is. It's, it's, it's important. It helps us really get where we need to be. It, it's just part of the process. Yeah.
Do you usually send a project manager from your corporation, from your company, to the locations?
A lot of times, we would do that. So, it would, it would require more effort on our part. So, we would versus, and, and again, we've got a long-term relationship with Tina. She's here on the ground. We, we would normally be doing that. So, we would do that with somebody from our internal organization versus a third-party person. Does that make sense? So, it requires less work from us internally, and then, so we're essentially using that resource here.
Quick question.
Sure.
The scope of the work that the, the feasibility study, the group that's going to be doing the feasibility study, will they not have people on the ground helping out with that? I, I, I'm curious, because we haven't seen the scope of that particular line item.
Okay.
And that, that's my, are they, because that's a significant cost.
They will come to Jackson as part of their analysis and do some things like that. Yeah.
So, who will you have locally helping you?
The, well, the steering committee, which would be the planning department, is what I'm seeing.
May I ask, Mr. Pa, are you comfortable with that?
In projects that we work before, we usually have a contact. On projects that we've done similar to this in the past, there was usually a, a contact that layers on between the consulting firm and the people that are working on the ground at the local level. Now, whether that's critical or necessary, that's more a question for the consultant, because, again, we'll do what we do on our side of things, and them having somebody local, it's more of a facilitator. You know, it keeps somebody integrated in the project from the start versus, you know, them having to do that from, from where they are. So, like I said, we've had similar projects where they've had this person, and it's been helpful. But, again, can the project be done without it? Sure. But as, as Victor said, it'll just put a little bit more pressure on the steering committee to manage that.
If I may, for simplicity's sake, what we're approving today, what's reflected in that contract is what is budgeted. If it is determined that a project manager is needed, that a budget request to increase the budget will have to be submitted, so we will present that at that time.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification, because I think the council just really needed to understand there's a lot of steps here. It's a big project. We want to make sure you have what you need, but we also want to be prudent with the money if it's not necessary.
But I think as a board, we got to make sure, if we're going to look at this contract and we're not going to hire a person to be on the ground, we need to make sure we do it across the board, because right now, I don't think the reason that we're looking at it is really what we're looking at. We think we're looking at something else that I don't want to talk about. But I think if the person needs to be here in Jackson to make sure things are being done correctly, I don't see why we wouldn't do it. Because I think right now, is, we're, we're looking at it because of the person thing. I hate to say that. That's why we're doing this. I don't want to bring it up, but the person, we need someone here to do it.
The question I'd have is, on the next item that's coming up, do we have that budgeted for those sub areas as well?
It is not, there's not a person in the contract to be a project manager. I've been, I've self-appointed myself to be the point of contact for LRK. We've already got a preliminary steering committee, and I can discuss that when we get to that item. But, again, the contract in front of you today does not have that cost reflected, and so, I don't know that we can really debate that much further.
We have a budget amendment already approved. We have a contract, sorry, has a motion and a second on it. So, any further discussion on the, on the item, on the contract?
Yeah, I got some further discussion, because I want to be clear on this. I want this project to be a success, because I think it's good vision to, to, to develop the area out there. I really think that's a good thing to do, and I want it to be successful. But I just, what's your last name again, sir?
Buckholz.
Mr. Buckholz said, when I asked him, having a person here locally, is, is it critical? And he said, yes. And I'm inclined to, to, when the time comes, to use the local person here if it's critical. Now, you asked that, Mr. Palet, do you agree with his assessment that it's critical to have a local person here to take this position?
You're kind of putting me on the spot.
Yes.
Again, it's, it's, it's up to you as a council to, to consider, if you want to see that budgeted and, and be a part of the project, then that's more of a decision for, for you to make.
No, that's not my question. My question is, do you agree with him that it's critical that we have a local person here in that position, that, and therefore having a local person would tend to make this project go towards success?
Well, since, since that person is his person, you know, his, he's the consulting firm. It's his person, and they're working on behalf of his firm. He can speak on that. I, I can't speak to how critical it is to his operation.
Let me stop you one more time. I don't mean that. I'm asking, not is it critical to have his person, is it critical to have a person locally to feel that position? Not his person, a person.
It's hard for me to answer that.
Yeah, I, I do think in Stan's defense, I believe, that, that really probably is, excuse me, a question for me, because, again, what we've done is, is, that's an eternal thing for LRK. We're, we're sort of saying that, gosh, it makes our life easier if we can have somebody here that is our, you know, sort of boots on the ground. That, so, in that sense, it's, it's, it's critical. If we didn't have somebody here, we would do that from, from our, just our offices. We would require a little more travel and things like that from us to do. So, in that sense, we would do it a different way.
All right.
So, we can make do, y'all. Yeah, really.
Counsel, let's, let's do this. We have, we have a current budget amendment. We have a current contract. Though, we, we don't want to delay this another month on this one piece that's not in the contract or the budget amendment right now. If it's something that the council, we can come together, we can talk with LRK in the future, maybe amend the contract and the budget after that, and we can do that. But right now, we have a budget amendment, and we have a contract.
So moved.
We already have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Was this tableed last month?
It was tabled until this month.
Okay, so we don't need to bring it off the table?
All right. No further discussion. Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed seven to two abstain.
All right. Item nine is a consideration of a contract with LRK for planning advisory services for Jackson Design Guidelines and Small Area Plans.
All right. Again, this is a separate contract, working with LRK, different point person in their firm, but I am handling the point operations from the city side of things. This will be to create a sub-area plan for the western area, believe, out around the airport. Stan can provide some clarity if you so need it, and to update our sub-area plans for downtown Omen Arena area, which will be extended boundaries a little bit, and also the design guidelines as part of the Civic Master Plan. We have funding from the chamber to cover task one, and, again, just like the other contract, we will fund each task as we move forward and look to have this in next year's fiscal budget.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
All right. Item 10 is consideration of an independent contractor agreement with James Richardson for Love Your Block.
This is just a consultant agreement or contractor agreement. James Richardson is the maintenance operator for JacoA, and he's helping us with scoping for the Love Your Block projects, just making sure what the homeowners apply for is something that our program can feasibly do, because it's a volunteer-driven program.
Question, was this on the agenda that we should review Thursday?
No.
It was added because we, there was a bit of a miscommunication with the procurement, and we need, contracts need to go before council, so we didn't want to delay, again, the program any further, so apologies, it wasn't there then, but it is there now.
It wasn't on a Friday.
From public's information, this person will help scope projects for Love Your Block.
Yes, and has already helped start with us, so he's been a great asset.
Okay.
It's a paid position.
Yes, we're paying him through the grant. It's, I mean, he's, it's very minimal.
Okay, does Mr. Richardson have a contract as license?
Any other questions from council?
Move to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one abstain.
Thank you. Item 11, consideration of committee and board appointments. Appointment of Tim Martin to the Jackson Madison County Historic Zoning Commission Board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Next is reappointment of Herb Slack to the Jackson Madison County Historic Zoning Commission Board.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item C is the reappointment of Vicky Birch to the Board of Trustees for Western City Healthcare.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right. Item 12 is budget amendments less than $10,000. Item 13, consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Motion? Second and a second. Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
No further business coming for the council. Meeting is adjourned.